Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting of Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, December 13. The five of us, and Eric Morrissey and Alyssa Hockstein, are here at Village Hall. The rest of you are here via Zoom. And the first item on our agenda is our annual Youth Recognition Awards Night. Back to that in one moment, but since I have a captive audience, let me just report that our COVID numbers received today were 42 new positives over this one weekend and a total of 90 active cases. Those are both the highest numbers we have ever seen. So it's a source of concern, just at least. All right. More on that later. We have a whole bunch of attendees and we're going to mention the good works of six groups: the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps, the Pleasantville Community Synagogue, Hebrew School, the Emmanuel Lutheran Church Emmanuel Ringers, Pleasantville High School Echo Program, Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department, and the Farmers Market. So we're going to go through those in that order. And if there are representatives of those groups that would be interested and willing to give us a little bit of a sense of what the activities were for that group this year, I ask that you raise your hand in the Zoom participants. And Alyssa will be on the lookout for you and promote you to a panelist so you have an opportunity to speak. But we'll also, I'm going to share my screen and we'll go through the series of groups and I will share a screen view of the certificate that we have prepared for all of you guys honoring your good work. And those things will be coming in the mail to you soon. So let me just go to that. Every year for a long time, around about this time, we've honored folks who have assisted in so many ways throughout Pleasantville. And it's fair to say that in lots of cases, students have picked up the spirit of volunteerism that their parents have begun. And they have also, in many, many cases, shown their parents the way. I can speak for myself in that regard with my kids, I think, brought me into some things I might not otherwise have been brought into and have led in those things and vice versa. I hope I have encouraged them. So I just want to say, as we do annually, that this spirit of volunteerism in Pleasantville has driven so many great community programs and it continues to do so. And the young people that have participated in all these programs deserve the honor we give them because of the good work they have done. And we certainly hope that the good work they have done is a template for their future lives. I'm sure it will be, but we also hope that it will be recognized by wherever you intend to go next from Pleasantville High School. And we're pleased to be on record as saying you've been part of a community that appreciates your good work. So first up, we have the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. The nominator was Captain Caitlin Zaplatel. Anybody on this call like to talk a little bit about what went on this year? All right. The honoree is Heather Vamosi. Heather, you'll be getting this in the mail honoring your outstanding community service for the Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Next up is the Pleasantville Community Synagogue Hebrew School. The nominator was Galit Messman. Did I see that there was a raised hand there? Yes, I see a raised hand.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Hello, Galit. Tell us a little something about what Molly Gallin has done and what you guys are all doing.
Oh, great. Molly has been an assistant in our religious school at Pleasantville Community Synagogue for five years now, ever since she became a botanica back when she turned 13. And she has diligently and wonderfully continued to volunteer her time, her energy, her passion, and her knowledge with our youngest students in our Hebrew school. And we are so sad that she's graduating this year because she has been such a gift to us at Pleasantville Community Synagogue and we wish her so much luck. And we thank Molly for all of her energy and time and everything she has given.
I thank you for that, Galit. This, of course, is the painful aspect of this ceremony. In lots of cases, these young folks have been the engine of so much good are about to march off to do good somewhere else when they head off to college or wherever they go. But we give you this certificate, Molly, and I say this to everyone, we give them to, with the expectation and assumption that when you're done with your wanderings, you're going to come back to Pleasantville, New York. So congratulations, Molly. This certificate is headed in your direction. Next up is the Emmanuel Lutheran Church Emmanuel Ringers. Aiko Cornelius, there we go. Welcome.
Hello, this is Aiko Cornelius. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, no, hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm Aiko Cornelius. I'm the Director at Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Emmanuel Ringers are a musical group that is one of four groups at our church that participate in services. They rehearse once a week and are able to prepare music so they can not only play during worship. Last year, because of COVID, we only had about a one-hour rehearsal and we recorded during our rehearsals. And then that was videotaped for the services so that we could still provide music, but in a safe socially-distanced manner. So thankfully, this past, this fall, we've kind of gone back to the way we've been doing it, to our rehearsals. But I have six, last year had six ringers from, not six, sorry. I had 11 ringers from October to June. Six of them are from Pleasantville because it's not just a group that is for just church members, it's also those who are outside of our membership as well as our communities. So I have six ringers who have, who, some of them have started when they were in second and third grade and have continued doing so and have been actively participant and been dedicated and committed with their time and talents. And so I have Nico Cornelius, Corinne Furness, Max Gonzaga, sorry, I'm talking too fast.
No, keep going.
Cynthia O'Brien, and Chloe Ramsey-Lavoie, and Brendan Webke. So those are my six who I have represented today.
Thank you.
Really blessed to have them and appreciate the time that they give to our music ministry.
Thank you for that. It's, to say that it's a distinctive piece of Pleasantville's cultural life would be an understatement, a longstanding program and one that has attracted a lot of attention over the years. And that attention has driven this ongoing activity on the part of all of these young people. So thank you, Aiko, for all you do and thanks to these six members of the group. Next up is Echo. Is there anyone from Echo? Seeing none, Echo is the Pleasantville High School Community Service Club. It's existed for a long time. It has continued to be a student-driven thing, obviously with some faculty support. The nominators were Stephanie Mera and Allison Steinberg. And these young people have participated in a whole bunch of community activities. And they are Riley Valvelizza, Maeve McCourtney, Sofia Gomez, Ryan Sullivan, Nicole Gerosa, Carrie Finnegan, Chloe Delane, and Elizabeth Allardice. We wish you could all be here in the room and we could thank you and honor you personally and give you a little moment on our very local TV to make you very locally famous. But under the circumstances, we're sending our appreciation via Zoom and we will send these certificates by mail. Thank you, Echo. Next up is the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. Any speakers from that group? Three members, all participating in the fire department. They are Brian Scopino, Apple Doesn't Fall Far From the Tree. His dad, Estario Scopino, is a core member, past and future chief of the Volunteer Fire Department. Benjamin White and Theodore Lynch. Fantastic service that is delivered by our Volunteer Fire Department. The nominator was Chief Madison Martineau. And it is great to see young people, grades 10 and 11, participating as junior members. So thank you, Brian, Benjamin, and Theodore. Pleasantville Farm Market, I'm pretty sure Steve Bates is on there, is he? He is.
Steve Bates in the house.
Welcome, Steve Bates in the house. Let us know about the folks you are honoring from the Farmers Market.
Oh, that's great. Yep, so I'm Steve Bates, Director of Market Operations for Food Chester, a nonprofit that operates the village's Farmers Market. And I thank the Mayor and Administration Board of Trustees for coordinating tonight's to Zoom. I actually love the way you're displaying the certificates. If we're in this form, it's kind of a nice touch. So thanks for putting that together. Broadly, I thank all the Pleasantville youth that are being mentioned tonight for contributing to our community and other needs through volunteerism. Specifically, I'm here to acknowledge the young people doing so through the Pleasantville Farmers Market Intern Program, which began in 2010. Traditionally, our interns would help with operational setup of the market, but also music and kids' events and culinary programs. But during the last two years, our interns rallied around the expanded logistics that it takes to run a market, AKA mass event, during a pandemic. And they show up like elves before the market and after the market to create the impression that it just happened. And it doesn't just happen. It takes a ton of grit in all weather with weekly changes, it seems, to our logistics for our interns to make it appear that it just happens. And so tonight is, in large part, something I wait all year for, an opportunity to shine a light on that effort by them. Their teamwork, their punctuality, their checking emails has been invaluable. And their positive spirit, too. I mean, that's one of the best things about seeing them arrive at 7:00 AM or at 12:00 on a busy day and they leap right in. So without further ado, we appreciate and honor contributions by. And I will mention, as you place, Cecilia Holman up first. So Cecilia, thank you so much. And Aliona Myrick. And Zachary Nielsen-Pappish. And Eli Nielsen-Pappish. Ellie Herman. Erin Omara. Nicholas Peters. Annie Rogan. Elsie Sable. And Jaden Sarabend. And I will, as a postscript, mention as well, these interns who have had the gall to leave our community on a far-flung quest of a community activity, but did donate a great deal of time well into our spring and summer. So we have Bridgette Omara and Victoria Stargiati and Ari Zweibom, who, when I mention those three names, I'm mentioning three people that culminated, you know, four to five years of contributions. So they are near and dear to our hearts. We miss them dearly, but I wish them well and expect their time with us was just a launchpad as they wanted to great things.
It's a launchpad.
For your contributions to the community, through the Farmers Market. And that concludes our thank you session.
So let's make the assumption it's a launchpad of a round trip and at some point they'll be back.
Right, yep.
Thank you, Steve, and thanks to every one of the young people you honored tonight. So I'm going to stop my share. In previous years, we would have had a bigger group, including a whole lot of folks from the Appalachian Service Project. Gail Zarek would be here to tell us about that. Given the goings-on in our world a year ago, ASP wasn't possible, but it's our sincere hope that not only will they be able to run a program this summer, but that all of us will be back here next year around this time, maybe in the same room, so that these young folks can be thanked properly. But in the meantime, thank you all. Thank you to your school and your parents who have made some of what you do possible. But thank you most of all to you who have reached up through your own initiative and done good stuff for your community. In some past years, we've given away some sort of modest swag and this year we could have done it with a GPS device that could let us know where you are so that we know when you're coming back. All right, I thank you all. Had a few announcements to make, but I'll hold on to them for the moment. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider accepting the deed for Springfield Court. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I say move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the public hearing. Eric, do you want to describe where we are? I think that was described last week, but a couple weeks ago, but let's do it again.
Sure. So Springfield Court is a subdivision. All the homes have been constructed and occupied, the last step in the process, which had always been an agreement between the developer and the village was to dedicate the roadway to the village. The way that our code is written, we, at the last meeting, had a public hearing and accepted the dedication of the roadway. Our village code now mandates that we hold a separate public hearing for the acceptance of the deed. So more procedural matter than anything else. And we'll have a resolution after this to move everything forward.
All right, any comments, questions? Anybody watching via Zoom? Raise your hand if you have a comment on this subject. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed. So let me just make a couple of announcements. The first is I just want to thank all of you for participating a week or more ago in our annual lighting ceremony, lighting the tree and the dreidel. But a special shout out to this guy, Paul Alvarez, who in his role as a trustee, but also in his role as Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce, got the Chamber of Commerce involved, as they always have been, and Pace University as well, but by hook or by crook, jazzed up our musical accompaniment. You want to?
Yes, it was, I appreciate everyone that helped out, too. The village was involved, partial recreation helped out as well. We had volunteers in the high schools, well, giving out the hot chocolate. It was a great night. The weather cooperated with us, so really happy that the event turned out well. We were able to get, it was a six-piece band. They were great. They're out of, I think they're a Westchester band, I believe. And hopefully we'll have them next year.
Yeah, it was fun.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun and I think folks were glad to be out there to share a community event that lots of people have looked forward to and that we missed out on. So, I don't know, Paul, did this lawyer gig go into event planning?
Might have to. Next year will be bigger. Might move it away from a Wednesday to a Friday.
Yeah.
That's right.
Mmm.
Interesting, huh?
Yeah, right. Jeffneys fills with beavers. So I just want to remind folks again, I mentioned this at the outset, but our COVID numbers have been climbing. This past weekend climbed rather dramatically, 42 new positives in the Village of Pleasantville over the weekend, about 90 active cases now. So those are both higher numbers, I think, than we have ever seen. Maybe related to, you know, some specific events, but whatever, it helps all of us to be cautious about our behavior. It helps all of us if folks can get vaccinated. And not only does it protect one another, but it also helps our local businesses who, as we head into the winter, are at risk of having more trouble keeping seats occupied and tables occupied. So a bit of a scary increase in the numbers in the last few days. We're hoping that slides down the other side of the hill, but as you have seen, both locally, regionally, and nationally, this new variant is a new concern and painfully, it ain't gone. So Eric, can you report on the governor's new mask requirement?
Sure. So last week, the governor announced the new masking mandate, which took effect today. It requires that masks be worn at all indoor facilities unless there is a vaccination mandate in order to enter the facility. So it can actually not be a hybrid, so you can't say, wear a mask. And if you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask. It's all or nothing. So it's an interesting caveat in this mask policy. It's in effect through January 15th at this point and it is being enforced by local health departments. So the Westchester County Health Department will actually enforce and there's a fine up to $1,000 for establishments that don't abide by this new rule. So that also applies to municipal buildings, along with businesses and offices.
Is this like gyms and restaurants and all that as well?
Yes, correct, correct.
So thank you for that again. You know, we're trying to model the right behavior here. There are lots of ways in which we can recapture some aspects of our regular life, but if we are careful about doing so, we can keep that forward progress. Admittedly, there has been a bit of a hiccup in that forward progress and my plea is for everybody to lock arms and try to move forward. I can report with satisfaction that this past weekend at the Farm Market, Phelps Hospital and the Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps had another vaccine clinic mostly aimed at kids and it was very, very well attended. So kids five and older are now eligible, right?
Correct.
For vaccines. And boosters are also eligible for anyone who is more than six months out.
16 and older.
I can very much encourage folks who are eligible to get boosters. They're being offered by a bunch of pharmacies, but also through Northwell Health and many other settings. So please, please, please take the opportunity to jump on that opportunity. Farm Market, as perhaps you know, has gone into its winter mode after Thanksgiving and is heavily dependent on online advance ordering. So take a look at pleasanvelfarmersmarket.org, sign up if you haven't and support this really good program. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, lots of folks are frustrated by traffic, as are we. It is largely, I think, a result of the sawmill project. A whole lot of people are coming through the Village of Pleasantville to try to bypass the narrow one-lane area where the sawmill is under construction. Painfully, that is at least another year in the doings. So folks at various places have asked, can we look at, can we look at what's going on? And I know we've also had the same conversations with Mount Pleasant, especially along Bedford Road as it heads out toward the pace. It's just a tough, tough, tough circumstance. So I will say, whatever more traffic we encounter is pretty clearly largely driven by both that and the fact that a whole lot of people are at home who, pre-pandemic, might have been at work. So train commuting is coming back a bit, but still clearly not anywhere near the level it was. So Eric, you want to remind folks, we've talked about it a few times, but the changes that are soon to happen about parking in Memorial Plaza?
That's right. So the village is moving towards a hybrid model for Memorial Plaza, whereas permit holders will still be provided parking Monday through Friday. Would be permit holders only from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. From 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, non-permit holders would be promoted, would be provided the opportunity to park in a lot, but they would have to pay via pay machine or the Pango Parking Act. Saturdays, it would, paid parking would be required. From 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, if you do have a permit, you would be permitted to park without paying the meter. We've ordered pay machines, so once those are arrived, get installed, we'll do outreach and then enforcement will start. But certainly, the, there will be a period of communication and the like as we roll that out.
Thank you. So I mean, recognize, this isn't a money grab. This is an effort to create some fairness. We want to make these parking spaces available to anyone who wants to park there when we have the availability. Pre-pandemic, the permit side was permit for, solely for permit holders until 3:00 PM. We've been in a circumstance where we've got folks who paid for permits and thus are entitled to park there, but lots of empty spaces. And we need to find a way to allow those people to park in empty spaces, but to share in the cost. All right. Other announcements?
I just want to give a quick shout out. Last Thursday, Peter and I attended an event down at Spectrum Designs. Specifically, it was an award to Lindsay Waxman. And this was an award by the New York State Industries for the Disabled. For anyone who doesn't know, Spectrum Designs is a place that has a lot of employees that have disabilities. And what's great about it is that, you know, they do a lot of great work and they provide essentially a place for a lot of individuals that have maybe finished school or have finished college or really are looking to go into the workforce, but are disabled in some kind of way. And I think it's an amazing program that's happening here in Pleasantville. And I was very happy to be a part of their recognition of one of their own employees that won this special award for all the hard work it's just doing. So I thought that was great, wanted to let the community know that we have a very, very special place here in Pleasantville where, you know, we are helping a group of individuals that really need a lot more attention to be given to them and we really need to support businesses like that. So I was very proud to be a part of that event.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Paul. So Spectrum Designs is at the corner of Martling and Tompkins. And it's been there, what?
Two years.
Year and a half.
Yep.
That effect. An amazing, amazing thing. They make all kinds of promotional-related stuff, T-shirts, caps, mugs, all that, all that sort of stuff. And they're doing it now for a whole spectrum of clients, including the MTA and the New York Knicks, as well as lots of organizations. So anyone who's interested in that kind of stuff, take a look at Spectrum Designs. They are also allied with the Nicholas Center, which is an enterprise that tries to assist folks on the autistic spectrum in developing workforce opportunities. It got started in Port Washington, Long Island, and their first expansion was blessedly to Pleasantville, New York. So a really, really, really impressive thing and doubly impressive to have the chance to honor, as you already said, Paul, Lindsay Waxman, their first administrative employee who comes with a disability and has turned out to become a core piece of the system. So good stuff going on. Any other announcements?
I thought I would mention, you and I both attended the holiday concert of Orchestra 914, which is this orchestra that has recently relocated in Pleasantville, New York, that was held at the Episcopal Church. And it was just a lovely event and really kind of exciting that we have an orchestra based in Pleasantville now to add to the many other wonderful arts organizations that we have in Pleasantville.
It certainly was. They have a new musical director and conductor, Russell Gurr, who hails from Australia. And I don't think anyone could have attended that concert without feeling the energy and enthusiasm and charisma that he delivers. So a really great event, two performances on the same day at St. John's Church. And I think quite well-attended. But of course, they were limited by social distancing. But it honestly felt like the house should be full and there should be people outside clamoring to eat in. It was really a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun, yeah.
All right, other takers? All right, Paul, number 306.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the amendments of the regular meeting held on November 22nd, 2021. The minutes are attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 307 Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2022, as listed below. Budget transfers in the general fund, $333 from police admin conference training to police patrol conference training, $223 from police patrol outside service to police admin software support, $5,500 from contingent to transfer to capital for Manville Road improvements. That's a total of $6,056. Appropriate fund balance, general fund, $21,500 from village hall repairs for the village hall roof repair. Decrease in revenue and expenses, general fund closeout for, what's DFC?
That's Pleasantville Strong.
Okay. Grant year. So this is a decrease of $60,566.06 for Pleasantville Strong drug-free community revenue. And that's broken down to $7,780 for conferences, $6,153.01 for supplies, $6,304.80 for miscellaneous, and $40,252.25 for OS expense. Increase in revenue and expenses, general fund, the same thing, Again, Pleasantville Strong, drug-free community revenue, $8,550 for drug-free community conferences, $14,795 for drug-free community supplies, $3,900 for drug-free community miscellaneous, and $97,755 for drug-free community OS expense. Budget transfer in the water fund, $241. Water distribution supplies to water purification supplies. In the capital fund, $42,074.75 sidewalk reconstruction fiscal year 21 to sidewalk reconstruction to fiscal year ending in 2022. $57,148.78 from highway street resurfacing fiscal year ending in 2021 to the same thing in fiscal year ending in 2022. Increase in revenue and expense capital fund, $5,500. Inter-fund transfer from general fund to Manville Road improvements.
Everyone get that, or should we ask her to read it again?
Now, now.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just want to remind everybody that the revenue and expenses for Pleasantville Strong are reviewed and approved by the Pleasantville Strong Steering Committee. And the money itself comes from a federal grant. The village is the fiscal agent, which is why it shows up on our books and in these descriptions. But the money that's being dispensed is federal grant money that comes to them annually, is not village taxpayer money. Eric, as we well know, $21,500 village hall roof repair. Old buildings are the gift that keeps on giving.
That's right, yes. And this is specifically focused on the back portion of the roof. Gutters are in need of some clearing and cleaning. We're putting in ice shields and pigeon guards as well.
We hired Eric to be an administrator, but he has become a plumber and now a stormwater manager.
Yeah.
And possibly is going into roofing.
Why not?
Did I get a second? I think I did.
Yep.
Before I blather on. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 308 David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated December 13th, 2021 for fiscal year ending 2022, covering check numbers 102132 to 102309. From the general fund, $338,819.48. From the special purpose fund, $590. The water fund, $142,903.65. Capital fund, $105,047.71. The refuse fund, $17,481.11, for a total of $604,841.95. Payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the payment of claims? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, Michael, 309.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Christopher Mantz, Recreation Supervisor, effective December 3rd, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chris joined us just at the time that the pandemic struck. And he was, Panther Club was going to be a significant piece of his work responsibilities. Panther Club got canceled. To his credit, he participated in lots of other things. And we wish him well in his next activities. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 310. Back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with Starnet Emergency Services to provide standby ambulance services on Saturday, July 9th, 2022, for the 2022 Pleasantville Music Festival, attached to the EMS standby agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same outfit we've used in the past?
That's right, same rates.
Right. All in favor? Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 311 Nicole.
Whereas all jurisdictions within, I know, I know, I get the long ones today.
Sorry, I got one right after you.
All right, let me breathe. Okay. You have to take deep breaths when you're doing this with a mask.
Yeah.
Whereas all jurisdictions within Westchester County have exposure to natural hazards that increase the risk of life, property, environment, and the county and local economy. And whereas proactive mitigation of known hazards before a disaster event can reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property. And whereas the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, Public Law 106-390, established new requirements for pre- and post-disaster hazard mitigation programs. And whereas a coalition of Westchester County municipalities with like planning objectives has been formed to pool resources and create consistent mitigation strategies within Westchester County. And whereas the coalition has completed a planning process that engages the public, assesses the risk and vulnerability to the impacts of natural hazards, develops a mitigation strategy consistent with a set of uniform goals and objectives, and creates a plan for implementing, evaluating, and revising this strategy. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Village of Pleasantville, one, adopts in its entirety the 2022 Westchester County Hazard Mitigation Plan, referred to as the Plan, as the jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan, and resolves to execute the actions identified in the Plan that pertain to this jurisdiction. Two, will use the adopted and approved portions of the Plan to guide pre- and post-disaster mitigation of the hazards identified. Three, will coordinate the strategies identified in the Plan with other planning programs and mechanisms under its jurisdictional authority. Four, will continue its support of the mitigation planning committee as described within the Plan. Five, will help to promote and support the mitigation successes of all participants in this Plan. Six, will incorporate mitigation planning as an integral component of government and partner operations. Seven, will provide an update of the Plan in conjunction with the county no less than every five years. And the actual Plan is attached.
Is there a second?
Can you read that again?
Second.
I think it's essentially self-explanatory. Did you have anything to add to that, Eric?
Nope, just that this is a process that's being carried out by most every other municipality in Westchester County at this point.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 312 David. You got a long one.
Right. Whereas by resolution adopted on March 24th, 2004, the resolution, the Village of Pleasantville Planning Board granted final subdivision approval to Pleasantville Village Estates Incorporated, Grantor. And whereas pursuant to the resolution, Grantor is required to submit an offer of succession to the Village of Pleasantville for Springfield Court in recordable form satisfactory to the council for the Village of all land, including in streets, utility, drainage site, and sidewalk easements as shown on said plot, and not specifically reserved for private use, together with a policy or certificate of a title company qualified to do business in New York State showing the title to the deed to be recorded in the county clerk's office at the expense of the applicant. And whereas at a Board of Trustees meeting dated November 22nd, 2021, following a duly noticed public hearing, Board of Trustees adopted a resolution accepting an irrevocable offer of dedication from Grantor for Springfield Court. And whereas pursuant to the Village Law 6-610, the Board of Trustees must also accept a deed from the Grantor transferring Springfield Court from Grantor to the Village of Pleasantville. And whereas the Grantor has provided a form of deeds and secured a commitment for title insurance, which has been reviewed by the Village of Pleasantville Attorney and found to be satisfactory. And whereas a duly noticed public hearing was held on December 13th, 2021, with respect to the Board of Trustees' acceptance of the deed for Springfield Court. And whereas a set forth in the resolution of negative, a resolution of, sorry, whereas a set forth in the resolution, a negative declaration was approved pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, with respect to the proposed subdivision approval, which included the offer of secession of Springfield Court to the Village of Pleasantville. Therefore, no further environmental determination is required under SECR with respect to the instant action. Now, therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the deed for Springfield Court provided by Grantor to the Village of Pleasantville. And now, therefore be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor and/or village administrator to execute the deed and all other transfer documents and to take any other actions necessary to effectuate the irrevocable transfer of Springfield Court from Grantor to the Village of Pleasantville. There were just two little typos in the second paragraph there. The title report, deed, and Schedule A are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's a very long storm of words that follows a series of long storms of words over the last many years. But the purpose of all of this not only is to take over the road, but also to make clear with great clarity in the record who owns what. And I can tell you that Pleasantville is not unlike many other communities. When you go back 75 or more years ago, that clarity does not exist in the records, and it gives rise to quite a bit of trouble. So Springfield Court is going to be ours, as was the plan to begin with. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 313 Michael.
Whereas Michael Galante, Director of Traffic at Hardesty and Henover, at the request of the Village Board of Trustees, prepared a traffic evaluation to provide the village with recommendations to either maintain the existing two-way traffic flow for both Vanderbilt Avenue and Depew Street, or consider converting one or both roadways to one-way traffic flow, either in the eastbound/southbound or northbound/westbound directions, with what we call the traffic evaluation. And whereas the traffic evaluation sets forth findings and recommendations relevant to the inquiry by the Board of Trustees regarding the potential for one-way traffic on Vanderbilt Avenue and/or Depew Street. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees hereby refers the annexed traffic evaluation to the Village Planning Commission for comments and recommendations based on the findings set forth in the traffic evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
So also a storm of words that simply says, this was an issue considered by the Planning Commission originally. And there has been some concern on the part of neighbors about it. And Michael Galante, who has looked at that again and essentially ratified his original recommendation. But since this was a matter that the Planning Commission was in charge of at the time of the site plan approval, we send it back their way to get comment.
That's correct.
Questions, comments?
Is the, so there wasn't an attachment for us on this? Is that, is it somewhere in between us and the Planning Commission? Or is it not available yet?
It's in draft form. I can circulate that tomorrow. But it'll be finalized and sent over. Yep.
Right, thanks. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. Back to you, Paul, 314.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the following ticket rates for the Pleasantville Music Festival. January 1st to January 31st, Early Bird, $45 for adults, $28 for students and seniors. February 1st through April 24th, pre-sale, $50 for adults, $30 for students and seniors. April 25th to July 1st, lineup announced, $60 for adults and $30 for students and seniors. July 2nd to July 8th, the week of the event, $65 for adults, $32 for student and seniors. July 9th, the day of the event, $70 for adults and $35 for students and seniors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So as you can see, it's a tiered structure that encourages early purchases.
That's right.
Comments, questions? All right, January 1 to 31, Early Bird.
That's cool.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, Nicole, 315. Blessedly short.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the amendment to the user agreement with TicketWeb for ticketing services associated with the Pleasantville Music Festival expiring on November 30th, 2022. And the agreement is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Substantively similar to what we've done in the past.
That's right. They've actually agreed to reduce their rates from the last festival. So we thank them for that consideration.
Okay. TicketWeb is a branch of Ticketmaster.
That's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve, 316 David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the TicketWeb Equipment Use Agreement for equipment related to the Pleasantville Music Festival expiring on November 30th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
More of the same.
That's right.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
I approve, 317 Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the promotion of Gerald Sarali to water maintenance worker, Grade One, job code 620, CSEA Wage Scale A, Step Five, at an annual salary of $82,339, effective December 18th, 2021. Said promotion is subject to a probationary period of a minimum of 12 weeks and can be extended to a maximum not to exceed 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry has been an important cog in the machine that is our water department and has continued to advance with further qualifications. Please approve this promotion. All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approve. 318 Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the New York State Department of Transportation Municipal Snow and Ice Program Agreement for the 2021/2022 year. Attached to this resolution is the actual snow and ice agreement from the New York State DOT.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that would be the reimbursement we get from the state for our plowing of sections of state road in the village.
That's correct.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 319 Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby institutes no parking every Saturday from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. from December 5, 2021 to November 20, 2022 as follows. Memorial Plaza Parking Lot, both sides from the gazebo to the end of the parking lot, northerly direction. Parking meter numbers 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, and 137 across from the Pleasantville diner. Further resolve that the Police Department is hereby authorized to post no parking signs and to tow all vehicles in violation of this temporary parking restriction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this reflects the fact that when the pandemic arrived, the opportunity for the farm market to go indoors to the middle school cafeteria obviously wasn't a possibility. And they operated last year outside in the winter, are doing so again this year, and likely to remain so. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, David, 320.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of the following part-time recreation assistance, job code 0269. All of these are effective January 1, 2022. Diane DiMarco, rate of $20 an hour, part-time for the Panther Club. Christelle Greaves, $20 an hour, part-time for the Panther Club. Jaden Magia, $20 an hour, part-time for the Panther Club. Heather Guthrie, $50 an hour, part-time available for after-school. Heather Guthrie, $6 an hour, part-time available preschool. Further resolve that such appointments are contingent upon successful completion of mandatory background checks.
Is there a second?
Second, just want to say it was $60 an hour, not six, but.
I almost got away with that.
He was trying to save.
And just a point of clarity, those higher hourly rates are for workers that are working specialized programs.
Right, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Bring us home, Pepperd, 321.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village treasurer to close various aged capital project accounts. H5140.201/21490, sidewalk reconstruction fiscal 2021, and H5197.201/21491, highway street resurfacing fiscal year 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just cleaning up the books.
That's right. And the budget amendment showed us moving money from last fiscal year in those accounts to this fiscal year, and then that enables us to close those accounts.
So if anyone plays the lottery, 5197201.
That's right, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. That's the last of our agenda items. Anybody have any new business? Is there a comment or question from any member of the public? Nobody here in the room, but perhaps somebody online? Seeing none, is there a motion to go into executive session on management personnel and real property?
I'm second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, and most particularly, thank you to the 30-some-odd young people that we honor tonight as part of our youth recognition. Your service is very much appreciated, and we look forward to sending you a certificate that reflects the appreciation we have. So thank you all. Our next regular meeting is after Christmas on Monday, December 27. Given the fact that that is the week between Christmas and New Year's and the rights we have to have meetings via Zoom, we're going to hold that meeting on the 27th via Zoom so that all of us can participate from wherever we are and whatever we're doing. We wish you a very happy holiday season, and we look forward to 2022 being a year when the world feels more normal. But Pleasantville has been with us for the last 18 months, and they'll be with us for the next 12 as we work our way through this. I thank you all. Happy holidays, happy new year.